Good evening, welcome to the Pleasantville Village Board Meeting of October 9th. We're starting, it's now about 10:15, a bit behind our anticipated schedule. We started our evening with a joint session which we do on an annual basis and may actually do twice a year now with the Pleasantville Board of Education. And so we had a productive meeting and lots of public comment. And it ran longer than we expected and so our regular Village Board meeting is beginning late. Today is Monday, October 19th. If you're watching live, you're welcome to call in with questions or comments at 769-1677. You can also watch on the web at PCTV76.org. Our next scheduled meeting is a work session next Monday on October 26th at 7:00 PM. And on Monday, November 2nd, we have another work session at 7:00 PM. Our next regular meeting is Monday, November 9th with a work session at 7:00 PM, regular meeting at 8:00. I had a couple of announcements to make. The first was that Patty Dwyer and I attended an event last week which was a celebration of Pace University's Dyson School for the Arts, which was celebrating its 35th year of life. And it was an impressive event and impressive opportunity to find out more about the Dyson School at Pace and all that goes on, not only at Pace in its multiple campuses, but at Pace in its Pleasantville campus. President Stephen Friedman, who assumed the office of President of Pace a couple of years ago, has substantial plans for Pace moving forward and has substantial interest in the Pleasantville campus. Pace has currently engaged an architectural firm and they're working on a master plan to rethink some aspects of their Pleasantville campus. And so we are enthusiastic about remaining partners with them. There's a longstanding history there, but I think also a great opportunity going forward for the future. It was an amusing evening to be sitting next to Patty Dwyer because she was there wearing multiple hats and it was never exactly clear which one. She is a double Pace alumnus. She is now a Pace faculty member, teaching students about government and governmental administration and of course also represents the village as its administrator. So a good time was had by all.
It was a very good time.
Couple of other points I wanted to mention, and that is that you may be interested to know that a number of positive things have happened in the downtown business district in terms of new owners acquiring properties and some new development and improvements being made. And a few that are worth noting, and I'm sure there are others that I may miss, and if someone will bring them to my attention in the course next week, I'd be happy to mention that a future meeting. But a couple of buildings on Wheeler Avenue have recently changed hands. One is 42 Wheeler, which is the building that has Pleasantville Pizza in the corner. And if you've been downtown lately, you'll see the building has been power washed and they have recently put up scaffolding and bridging that will allow them to replace the windows. So there are significant investments going on in that building. Directly across the street, the long vacant former Jackson and Wheeler Restaurant space, a 25 Wheeler, will soon be occupied by a new restaurant. The building changed hands a week or so ago. And by all reports, the new owner is intending to move forward quickly with an Asian fusion restaurant and a substantial renovation of that storefront. So that's also very positive news and the owner--
That's your building, right?
It is, yes.
So the whole building sold?
Whole building has sold. I'm a tenant on the second floor, the aforementioned 42 Wheeler.
Thank you.
Brian Skarsdott is a tenant on the second floor, so that is--
Come on down for good buy-loom deals. All violins all the time.
A shameless plug for trustee Skarsdott's day job.
Ad rates drop after 10:00. PCTV.
Of course, so does the audience. So fewer eyeballs on it. And I also wanted to mention that the owner of Lucy's Lounge at the corner of Wheeler and Bedford is well through the process of approvals with the planning commission for an addition that he proposes to build on that building that will add restaurant facilities and I think a second floor party room on the back of Lucy's Lounge. So that Lucy's Lounge, which has turned into an evening music scene, will now have the capacity to serve food as well. So those are examples of investments that are going on around the town, even in a difficult economy. And I think that's a good sign for the village of Pleasantville. Not only that we'll be seeing some immediate progress, but there are also plenty of business people and real estate investors that are interested in what we offer here in this community. And I'm happy to see all that happen. You have doubtless also noticed that we're in the midst of a project we've discussed before, and that is the renovation of the intersection and the future installation of a traffic light at the corner of Bedford Road where it butts Pleasantville Road, right in front of Luke Oil. That project is going along pretty well, although I'm sorry to report it's going to go on for another several months. Am I fair in saying that, Patty?
That's true. I mean, yes, the infrastructure work should be completed. Sidewalks are coming along very well, but it'll take time to get the signals in.
The project will include a new traffic light at Luke Oil and it will also include new pedestrian walk cycle traffic lights. If you've driven by and had a chance to notice, we've put in new granite curbs and new sidewalks in a number of places. The pedestrian conditions, which had been degraded there over a period of many years, will be dramatically better. It's a project that was jointly funded by the county through its Community Development Block Grant Program with matching funds from the village of Pleasantville. So we are promised by the traffic engineers that when they coordinate and synchronize the traffic lights at each of the intersections along Bedford Road and out to Manville and Pleasantville Road, that the efficiency of those intersections will be substantially improved. I know a number of people have commented to me the fear that the addition of an extra traffic light at Luke Oil will slow things down further. That certainly is not the intent nor the goal. And we've been assured that the computer modeling that is now the mechanism by which these things are studied, shows that we can actually not only improve safety, but also improve traffic throughput, as they put it. So thank you for your patience. Take a look at the improvements and the nice new granite curbs. Better days are ahead and indeed, from a pedestrian standpoint, I think better days are here already.
You know, I've talked to a couple of businessmen down there and they're just thrilled with what's going on. These are businesses that have in the past felt a little bit lonely, felt a little bit that the village hasn't really paid attention to them. And here they're getting this. These guys are just in heaven.
Thank you, yeah. It looks great. I also wanted to comment that the owners of Amanjari closed on their property on Marble Avenue that they were pursuing.
Great.
So there will be a new restaurant coming soon.
That is the old Bateen property, which is on Marble Avenue diagonally opposite the football field. So that is to be redeveloped into a substantial restaurant with an outdoor eating area and a substantial bar area. It will be a major new investment in Marble Avenue and really, I think, the first example of new development that suits the zoning that was passed a couple of years ago. So that's also very happy news.
But that whole zoning was to try to get this kind of life, this sort of change to happen down there. And here we are. It's coming.
If five years from now, we can say it was the zoning that did it, we can all go to bed and feel proud of ourselves.
Well, let's just take credit.
If it wasn't the zoning that did it, I'm happy it's happening anyway. And I just want to remind everybody that it is abundantly clear, all of us who sit here on the board, that the business community and the commercial taxpayer is not only a central part of the life of the village in terms of providing services and amenities that all of us depend upon, but a central part of the village in terms of floating the boat. When it comes to budget time, commercial properties are frequently high contributors to the tax base, both in terms of the village tax and the school tax. They're relatively small consumers of village services. And in return for the benefit they offer us, we should make a serious effort to buy Pleasantville. I can tell you that my family is a little tired of me saying when they suggest where we might go to dinner. That's not in Pleasantville, we have to rethink that. So hopefully you can all follow that example. Anybody else have any announcements they want to make?
Other than I'd like to see the meeting move along.
All right. With that in mind, we have a presentation tonight by Rich Lampert, who's a Pleasantville resident and a longstanding member of the Pleasantville Community Housing Board. Rich has been an anchor of that board and is a very knowledgeable character in the world of real estate and also in the world of affordable housing. Rich has been working on a proposal that he will describe in more detail for a potential affordable housing project that could be built behind Lucy's on village-owned property, the parking lot at the corner of Wheeler and Bedford. So take it away, sir.
Well, we have been looking at what the village needs for affordable housing. What are the areas, there are multiple areas. One was the moderate rate housing for the village elderly. What happens is that the village, when it built Ashburn Hall, was designed based on more of a moderate income. The area has since increased in income. Majority of our seniors are overqualified. So we're looking for establishing additional senior housing, also frail housing, more geared to 75 and above, with shower units, grab bars and various other things. We also had discovered another problem. When they took the financing for Ashburn Hall, the village or the town, village or the board or whoever, agreed to 12 Section 8 units. But the state in their knowledge never granted us any certificates.
Can you explain just briefly for people who may not know what Section 8 is?
Section 8 is a program in which the tenant pays up to 30% of its income for rent. Example being, let's say the tenant makes $10,000, their rent would be, with utilities, would be $3,000, which divided by 12, which would be $500 a month. And if the rent with utilities was $1,500, Section 8 would pay $1,000 and the tenant would pay $500. It's set to 30%. The maximum income they can make is 50% of the average median income household in Westchester. We have a commitment for 12 Section 8 units. And at the time, the financing was done, there were numerous vouchers. There are no more vouchers available, there's a two-year waiting list. As a result, we have a commitment to fund or this additional housing, but we have no resources. So what we're asking for is an additional nine Section 8-based certificates for Ashburn Hall. And these will be used for village and town residents. The second thing was we wanted to address workforce housing. Workforce housing is pretty well designed between 50% AMI and 90% AMI. In this village, in the area, it's geared between households making between $35,000 and $95,000, depending on the size of the family. We also looked at additional parking for the village as a development potential. Other issues that came arise were fair housing issues. Fair housing is not race or ethnic preferences, it's availability. Providing the availability of housing at an affordable rate is key. And then the other area we wanted to address was the Westchester settlement issues, which this project would be a key. The project that we anticipate, which I must compliment Fred Hedinger, did an outstanding amount of work.
Just to back up, you said this would be key in the Westchester County settlement?
Yes, it would be.
So this would be factored into their 750 units that they're seeking to--
Well, it's really--
It could be, right.
They have 175 units they have to build, non-senior, and they have $50 million. We would probably be one of the initial projects.
Okay.
There was one project ahead of us, but that's been on the books for a while. We're looking at somewhere between 28 and 32 units. 12 units are New York State tax credits. And those are really geared to our seniors. And that's between 60 to 90% AMI. The rents are going to be set at between 65 and 70%. And by law, we have to take the lowest and the highest. So if there's somebody at 70% AMI and there's somebody at 90, we have to take the 70. However, we can go up to 90% AMI if it's available. The other 20 units will be federal tax credit units. And they will be at 50 and 60% AMI.
And just so people understand, what you say here is that that's household incomes from $35,000 to $95,000. So clear that--
For the project, for the state tax credit, for the federal tax credits, it's going to probably be between 35, not between $30,000 and $55,000.
So these are for people, even though it's affordable housing, it's people with some degree of income?
Yes, they have to be creditworthy, which is a big key.
Right.
We do not have any tenant subsidies, just all the subsidy goes to the building. The idea or design called for building a two-level garage, one below grade, providing about 108 spaces, 99 structured and eight surface. Our current demand is 60, or supply I should say, or demand is 60. We would have an additional non-reserved spaces between 16 to 22, depending on the amount of senior citizens in the project. All the costs of the project would be covered by various financings, as well as the Westchester settlement, which could be significant in this case.
What would this project have to do to qualify as being a project that met the Westchester settlement? What would have to be done differently with populating this project?
There's no preference. It's availability. The settlement is availability. You'd have to advertise.
So that's strictly the only difference, is you're going to have some regulations on how you advertise?
Yes, you have to advertise for the entire county.
Just the entire Westchester County?
Yes. Especially, you know, you would put in advertisers, which we do now for Ashburn Hall, all for the entire county.
And with this location, I understand Patty, or Rich, that there has to be location specific? And I was under some doubt as to whether this would be acceptable to the County settlement.
Actually, this is, this would be one of like a premier location. Because New York State, HFA and MTA have a program to build affordable housing near train stations, which we would cover.
Well, I just thought that the census had to be, I mean, the areas were defined in smaller units and that it had to be more, that down around this area already by the census came up to the income levels or the, you know, the, how should I say, the level set by the county for qualifying for inclusion.
Well, the level set by the county is between, at West County, was between 50 and 65% of the AMI.
But you know, there is something that trustee Skarsdott is referring to. If there is already within a certain census tract, a number of households falling within that AMI or meeting some other criteria that the settlement was looking for, for threshold information, the units can't be placed in that block, in that census block area. I don't know if this is an area--
Right, exactly. That's why I wondered--
But I understand.
I know, what I think you're doing is it can't be situated in the low-income areas.
That's right.
This is not a low-income area.
Rich, I mean, I guess, just to pull back from, for my purpose, just getting into the sort of the nitty-gritty, everything I've heard about this settlement seemingly is accompanied by qualifiers and asterisks and everything else, saying that nobody, what becomes clear is that nobody really understands what the settlement is yet. And are we, and I don't want that to underline the premise of what you're putting forth here, but in a way, I almost feel like, because there is so much that's unknown about this thing and because it can be so punitive if it's applied to a community in the wrong way, isn't there almost a rational not to do anything in affordable housing until they figure out what it is? So that you don't get stuck, you know, not only doing the right thing for the right reasons, but having it backfire and you end up having it not count, which seemingly could happen?
Well, our formula or financial analysis is really based without using the Westchester settlement. What the Westchester settlement would do is provide just additional funding. They need breakthrough projects. This would be a breakthrough project. This would be critical to them.
I just, you know, our community's been so good over a long history of trying to stay up with the guidelines provided by the state and the county in terms of affordable housing. At one point, we're in like 95% of what they were looking for, where other communities were, you know, way, way off that mark by a factor of half even. And, you know, and I think it's admirable that we do that, that it adds to the fabric and of the community. But there's almost sometimes a willingness of those communities that are willing to do that, to have the thumb pressed on them even harder. And, you know, I just, I don't-- This is just such a weird situation with the settlement that it's one where I'm just concerned about being out too much in front of it at this point, and then you get taken down by it.
We're sort of like in the development, I mean, we're in a pre-development process.
I know.
So we won't be near, let's say, near the, anywhere near completion until the settlement is well established. And when I know about the settlement, it's about $50 million, 50.1 million. It's going to be dedicated to 175 units of the 750--
750 units.
175 units. It's going to be dedicated, that $50 million is going to be directed at 175 units. Of the other 575, there's really no funding.
Okay.
I mean, I think everybody's been clear that the $50 million is not nearly enough to produce 750 units.
Right. So it's really geared to 175 units, all which all have to be family or non-designated seniors. We are not going to have any designated senior units. We may have senior-friendly units, we do make the law.
And I didn't mean to take this down the track--
No, no.
--of talking about the settlement, when indeed this is something that's actually dependent of that, but nonetheless--
Right, Rich has been working on this well before the settlement.
The only thing, the settlement--
You just need to be cognizant of at this point, just because it's--
It's a lot of money we can get, a lot of benefits.
Right.
We're going to, you know, one of the things too, is we're going to own the land. It's going to be, you know, a master leased, non-subordinate. The county will grandly give us money, but I don't think you want the county living in the village, owning property in the village. County has sufficient funds to buy the site, but I think it's best for the village to ground lease the site.
We were talking about a village-owned piece of property.
Right.
So you're talking about a schedule for being on target with being in construction and completion and all that. But I think that if I'm not mistaken, there would be a whole process of review and approval at the village level before this project--
Exactly. We'd have to acquire the MTA lands, which MTA has agreed with, HFA, that, and two small other pieces.
Right, it would require action by the village board because it is village-owned property. It would require action by the planning board because it's a site plan and would require--
And the ZBA.
And the ZBA. And you mentioned the MTA.
MTA.
So with that coterie of agencies, I can only imagine that it would be something that would take some amount of time, not to mention effort, to be successful, and I would have to throw out if in fact it were successful. Now, you're looking at it from a project standpoint. I look at these, and I know we're in many ways in the same business, a little different aspects of the development world. And it's always unpredictable when you enter into these arenas, time and success or lack thereof as these things move through the process.
But as you're well aware, the state, it has committed, or they think, HFA, the HCR, MTA, to building these types of projects, which is a real plus for the project.
Oh, yeah, no--
And the settlement with Westchester, well, that would provide a lot of money, which would make the project much, much, very advantageous to the village. I think, even the design-wise and everything else, I think we could really build a very high-quality asset that would really enhance the village, at no cost to the village. I am not looking for, whether the developer is, I gave you four developers. My philosophy is we do not put up a dime.
Well, and I think, and not to jump ahead, I mean, in your funding analysis, you talk about, we actually then would recover some taxes in the form of payment in lieu of tax--
Right, and we get the non-subordinate, we get payments of the non-subordinate ground lease.
Right, exactly. So that, by your estimate, turns out to be $75,000 annually, or thereabouts.
With adjustment.
Right. So, and that's certainly more than we're currently getting for that piece of property.
Plus, you would get additional 12 to 18 parking spaces. You'd be generating additional revenue from the parking. I'm assuming that the village would run and lease the garage as a master lease. We put in two fees. We looked at the trash pickup and the snow removal. Basically, we control the outside, it's easier for us to do it, gives us more control. The nature of the financing, there are line items that are in there, we can get paid. The trash pickup, a little bit unique, somewhat of a commercial, is that we're going to own the garage, and we don't want a commercial, you know, truck coming into our garage damaging things, telling us where to put the garbage and everything else. Those two additional fees will put in there to make life easier for the village. Because we'd have control of the garage, we can do with the garbage as we trash it, as we've done. And the exterior would be shoveling anyway, so we might as well get money for it. Those are the other additional charges, which we looked at. So far as the 12 Section 8, we're going to have to put in the nine, well, the nine Section 8 certificates, we're going to have to put in as part of our site plan approval. There's nothing in the law that would give us the right to get nine Section 8-based certificates. However, we will make it part of our site plan approval, which would be an incentive for the town, for the county, to supply the units. There's three or four different sources where the certificates can come from.
Rich, just real quick, a Section 8 certificate is what?
It's a, we have, it's a certificate that goes to the property, so that if we have a tenant that's Section 8, we can put him there, a village resident, which you can put him in there immediately. Right now, we don't have any certificates, and we have an requirement to fund, or have 12 Section 8 units. So we have tenants, people in the village, relatives, even some older residents, that cannot go into the project because we have no vouchers. At the time they did this, there were plenty of vouchers, there were no more vouchers. There's two to three-year waiting list. This would give us better control on Ashburn Hall and make it much more efficient. Virginia could probably run the program. It'll be given to the project rather than, you know, to the village or anything like that, would involve the village or anything. What's the impact of school? We looked at this from, you know, the school point. New students outside the district, we estimated two to four, two to four students. Existing students and families moving into the project, most likely three bedrooms, would be three to five. So in total, it'll be eight, but we figured two to four outside. However, we also looked at demographics. We estimate 150 to 275 new children, mostly elementary, entering the school within the next three to five years. So our development would be insignificant. Where we got that number from is that 43% of our households are 55 and above. Looked at transitional rates, changes in taxes and everything else. And we think those are conservative numbers. We think there's going to be a major increase of the school age population. Because Pleasantville is a great place. One of the things we've noticed, I've noticed on Sutton, but it's that the families moving in are much more established, so they're coming in with two and three children. If you look at Sutton Place, which has been very quiet, two of the houses sold, there were six kids, two more houses are on the market, there'll be another five to six kids. Not one street, you know, 11 or 12, when it was relatively quiet. What you're seeing now, big thing is transition, where you send your kids to college or something, you're reminding them about just about done, you're laying out for 15 years. That transition period is decreasing. As that transition period decreases, because the people moving because of higher taxes and various other things, the schools get more and more utilized in a faster, faster pace. So what you're going to see is a very large student population, somewhat a continuous demand, which you haven't seen for a while. 43% of our households are 55 and above, I mean, there's a chart near. Look at that over time, it's quite significant. We also looked at the taxes and the operating costs. The project will have a minimal impact, if any, on the project. However, we were kind of surprised when we started doing our research, because my firm has to underwrite research. One of the things we found out is that, you know, besides the increased pension funding requirements that started in 2011, the Medicaid funding, which is providing $11 billion-- which is gonna, which is providing eleven million, eleven billion dollars over a twenty-seven month period, ends in December of this year. That means that the state's gonna have to absorb another four hundred and fifty million dollars a month, which means it's gonna come back on the county. That doesn't take into the deficit of seven million dollars, seven billion dollars, oh, sorry, with that, two thousand and eleven, and the estimated thirteen billion dollars with two thousand and twelve. We're not here talking about the camp, the county or the state, but we think there's gonna be a significant pushback to various governments, which would include increased taxes. But that was just based on the analysis. The affordable rental structure, which we didn't have in charts, we're looking at studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. The studios between eight hundred and nine hundred, and one bedrooms, eight seventy, eight seventy to twelve fifty, two, two bedrooms, a thousand, one thousand four hundred, and a three bedroom, seventeen to eighteen hundred. In addition, the tenants pay utilities. They're all gonna be package units. Tenants pay for the hot water, the heat, and their air conditioning. Each is a separate package unit. Makes for a highly efficient green building, which is a requirement now for state funding. What we're trying, what we're trying to do, and the federal government, is that we can designate senior units because of the certain laws, but we can make them senior-friendly. And also, that would, that would give us the ability to also fall under the Westchester settlement. So we're gonna have eight to ten senior-friendly units. There's, there are senior stalls, upper and the full handicap on, on below. We can take handicapped individuals, families. We figured we'd have about twelve units. The remaining units will be studios, ones and the threes. Demand, we clearly saw a demand for at least five, two bed, five three-bedroom units. The design will only support two. So, I mean, there is a deficiency, and the state would prefer five, but based, based on the design requirements, the most we could support is two. The other issue we have is with Ashburn Hall. Ashburn Hall was done for young seniors. There's tubs where there should be showers. And that was, we built this during the transition, though we did bring it up to the general partner, who I did promise to put in showers and did. We're gonna be faced with a problem of aging process, which is typical of most projects. And that's gonna cost anywhere between fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars to replace. It means cutting out the shower unit, putting in a shower unit, depending on shower heads and everything else. That is a long-term, you know, gold. Village may be, may have to chip in some money, I don't know how the project's gonna go. Now, all projects are built with walk-in showers or handicap. There's the ability of having tubs, almost, most, almost, very limited on these projects. They're looking for the aging process. We looked at a few projects. Workforce housing, forty-one Clinton Place, Neuro Shell, twenty-five work units with a garage, it's done by West Ham, sometime, sorry if you don't have the pictures, though. Twenty-two Tarrytown Road in Greenburg is a twenty-eight force unit proposed, probably the first one under the settlement. It was the old Kings Hotel, which was a shelter for senior, oh, no, shelter for homeless. That building is being totally expanded. Probably the first one put on this program. Other workforce housing was built on one nineteen, Terry Ran Apartments, Terry Run Crescent, which, ever been to TJ Fridays? That project has sixty units of workforce housing in there. And that was built in nineteen ninety-six. Down the road is Rimaville, which is Nob Hill. They have an additional forty-eight units of workforce housing. It's kind of fun, the school district, was it, Irvington School District, has eighty-four workforce housing units, which is kind of interesting, when you look at, when you talk about Westchester. Two programs we're looking at, New York State DHC, DHCO, and New York State HFA. Both have active programs, both would aggressively look at this project. One of the things I've been working on the state for thirty years is breakthrough projects. They tend to be well-funded, well-supported, this is, this'll be a breakthrough project.
And what, what qualifies as breakthrough?
Initial projects under, under the program, which this would be. We checked the entire county, we're probably one of the ones in, in the head of the deal, head of the curve, I should say. That would entitle us additional funding, which generally happens. I worked through Upstate Rochester, we worked through assisted living breakthrough projects that were funded very well. These were test cases to see, test different affordable assisted living programs. Under the federal tax, which this project will fall under, which supersedes everything, units that should be made to, excuse me, units should be made available to the general public. That is the only, no preference. There are selected special populations, like frail elderly, that you can, you can target if you'd like, which we are. To a large part, the development will serve, will serve the village well and the town. It'll provide affordable workforce housing, it'll provide needed frail elderly housing for the moderate income, which is the sixty to ninety percent, which is most of your residents. We talked to four developers, Regan Development, West Ham, Grayston Rose, and Wild Bull, who's not that interested at the moment, as well as two other people have called me. Pleasantville Housing Development Fund will act as advisory capacity only for leasing and operations. We will not get involved in the development, destruction, or funding of the project. We are not asking, we're not asking the village for any money. The development will be under, under the guidelines of the village. But again, we're earning a unique opportunity. Time, time is, is critical for this development. If the village decides to move forward, I would recommend that we, they form two committees, one will be a development design committee, to look at what you actually could build there, and designs, you know, that would favor the village. And the other one is the financial analysis and agreements, which would be the, which would be the garage lease, the ground lease, and various other items. I've gotten numerous calls, you know, from people that are interested in joining the committee, especially in the architectural. A lot of professions are qualified, are interested. It would make, make the development process interesting and make it more, the community more involved, and it would probably help the village move the project along.
You're talking about village residents?
Village residents. I got calls from at least four. One gentleman right here. I'm more architect than so far, and two attorneys, village attorneys. One is, you know, help out. So, I mean, there's, there's the potential. Sorry, we don't have the slides up, because some of the pictures would be not interested. But going back, we have, you have to make a decision, move forward, not aggressively, move forward, make the next step. Everybody's wondering about the settlement. From what I see and what I've discussed, and there's some other people here that was actually here for the settlement, this is a prime project. We would get credit, this is probably the last, once we build this project, we'd have a senior housing and a workforce housing. I think we'd meet our, we'd meet our criteria. I don't think we'd be ever bothered again. Then we'll have to All Monk and Pound Ridge and one other villages.
Rich, you said, two committees, one's the design, one's the financial, but what does the design committee do? I mean, it, I thought, I thought what you do is, maybe I misunderstood, but isn't part of it then trying to figure out what, what developer you want, or...
Well, we're bringing the developers in, and we're gonna sit with the committee, and we're, we're gonna come with the ideas.
So that's, that's how they, that's how these developers work, is that they come in and, they don't have a preset sort of concept of how they build these things, and then you tweak around the edges, or...
The garage itself is pretty more set. I mean, Fred's design is excellent. It's, you know, it maximizes the parking. But when you get to the retail, you get, you get interested. Should you build three, you know, three stories in the back, two setbacks designs, maybe upper-tier areas? I don't know, I'm not an architect. But one of the things I think the village would look for, that building will be a major asset.
So the design team, the design committee, part of their, their, their charge would be to actually interview and get comfortable with these different developers and which ones they think could build the product, project?
Yeah, we would give you a list, I could see the people that, you know, have the potential, both politically and financially, to build the project. And then the committee, what happens, you get into, you get into the design, you can get bogged down. I think it's important, especially for the village, it really gets uncreative. I'm not an architect, you know. But I think we have the resources within the village to really come out with something different. And, you know, do we wanna square, I mean, our original designs was just a very box. I call it the elementary school tool, similar design. Do you want that? It's very easy to build. But maybe we want something a little bit more innovative, okay?
But your notion, if I understood you correctly, is, in essence, we're putting together a rather detailed request for proposals? That basically says, here's what we want you to build, here's how big it is, here are the mix of units, here are the characteristics of the units, even here is what it's supposed to look like. Okay, developer, give us bids to execute this?
Yes. They would, most likely, they would build it, they would build it, finance it. We would probably have an option to acquire the property, you know, after thirty years or something like that, similar to that.
And would the developer manage it?
Yes. Because you would have federal tax credits and state tax credits, which, which are pretty significant, because this is a hard-to-develop area, so it's a thirty percent bonus.
So, as compared, for example, to Ashburn Hall, where, as you know all too well from having sat there at our quarterly meetings, the, the management of that has involved Grayston as one of the development partners, but also the volunteer boards of PHDFC and PCHDO. Would you envision a similar setup here?
No. We would be, Pleasantville would be advisory-only, and they would run the, the project, okay?
And would the Pleasantville Housing Development Fund group have any logical involvement in the genesis of this?
Just strictly advisement, advisory.
I mean, it wouldn't, they wouldn't make a logical base for a committee?
They would make a logical base, I don't think for the design, I'm, I'm not, not anybody...
Yeah, I mean, it's not the, it's not the expertise there, but...
But, I mean, and even the financial, with the attorneys, would be basically, yes, the, the Pleasantville Housing would be like, would manage and advise, in advisory capacity. We don't wanna have any legal obligations, we don't wanna fund, we don't wanna do anything. We have to have a real law.
We didn't with Ashburn, though, we, I was also on that committee with you, but we didn't, with, with Ashburn, we had a developer, it was, it was Rose.
Right.
But he didn't have anything to do with the design of the building, right? I mean, we had KGND designed it first, and then we got Rose on board to actually develop it. And they weren't even the builders, they were just the developers.
Developers.
So this is gonna be a different model.
What we're looking at is the developer coming in, working with the village and the committees, and coming out with a project that's beneficial to the village.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't, I think we want a building that looks, reflects Pleasantville. And that might be a little bit interesting design, I don't know. It may be, you know, the, the basic one we looked at, but it may be something different.
Right.
And the key here, and the key here is, we don't want any financial liabilities, we don't want anything.
Right. We don't wanna spend any money, we just wanna make money.
Exactly, I agree.
Right.
You're an alchemist.
Again, no. Again, again, we're in a unique situation. There are numerous programs, the pilot projects, the MTA project, New York State HFA, that is the perfect site. The settlement, that is the perfect site. So there's numerous projects that this, this project would definitely address.
And is there any possibility that we get one of these people interested in helping us build over the train tracks?
Building over the train tracks, they're dealing with the MTA, and they don't give away anything. They do, they would agree, because we need a piece of land. They've already agreed with HFA to help and donate land. There's a sliver of land next to our site that we need for the development.
But air rights would just be too expensive and, right, okay.
So what, you've obviously given us a lot more detail than we had had before about this. Do you perceive that there is a need for us to make a prompt decision about this in order to seize the opportunity you think is there?
I would say, I would say talk about it for another month or so.
Uh-huh.
Six weeks, but we should move ahead.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate that. And for the benefit of those watching, Rich came equipped with a PowerPoint presentation, and we have had a plug problem and were unable to project it, but if it makes sense, Rich, a piece of this or all of it, whatever you think appropriate, could be posted on the website.
Absolutely.
So, so at pleasantville-ny.gov, the presentation that Rich has basically given the verbal version of, will be available for anybody who wants to pick up that and look at it. So, how about this, I'm gonna suggest that we include this on our work session agenda at the next couple of meetings for consideration, and kick it around a bit, and then perhaps in a couple of weeks or three weeks, something like that, have you back in, kick it around further with you, so that we can start to gauge the level of interest the board has on it and what logical steps might arise out of it.
What I might recommend is I could bring in one or two of the developers to talk to the board.
Okay.
I love that. That'd be great.
That'd even be better.
Certainly, that'd be fine. Would you recommend that at the outset, as part of the process of our consideration about whether it's logical to think about this?
I think, we, yeah, I think I could bring in Regan Development, West Ham, and somebody else. Separate meetings, discuss it, let them make their presentation, give them the pluses and minuses, and decide from there.
All right.
I'm not making, I'm, I'm just...
I understand. Okay, so how about this, let me suggest, pending what any of you guys think, that we have a work session discussion about this on our agenda next week, and then pending the results of that, come back to you and suggest that we get together with some of the developers in order to develop a little more confidence about how it might all work and what the implications of it all might be.
I agree, and I think, you know, right now, I am known as two and three, and I have contacted another two people. So there's at least four active individuals, you know, firms that are very much interested in doing this project.
Okay. All right, well, it certainly is an interesting presentation, and you've invested an awful lot of effort and work into it, for which we thank you.
Just one of the things I have to stress is that part of our site plan, we have to put in nine section eight certificates as part of the site plan. It's the only way the state's gonna actually give it to you. Otherwise, and I won't say they lie to you, but they have a forgetful memory.
Well, but we've, we had...
We've noted that on...
We had section eight over at Ashburn Hall, and it's proven to be a benefit to...
But we don't have certificates.
Oh.
That's the problem. I want, I want part of our site plan approval for this project to include nine units at Ashburn Hall.
Oh, oh, an additional?
No, 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 additional. We don't have, we don't have any certificates. We have a commitment at Ashburn Hall for twelve section eight units. But they don't give us the ability to...
To get the certificates.
Certificates. And we need certificates for the tenants. The only way we're gonna get it from the state is to include it in the site plan, and they can't back out. And I have to stress that one point.
Okay. Makes sense. All right, sir, I thank you.
I thank you.
Appreciate your patience in waiting as late as you had to wait.
Thank you for your time.
All righty, we'll talk to you soon. All right, so as mentioned, for anyone who's watching, who might be interested, I think that we'll be discussing that on our work session in the next week and also probably the week thereafter, with the thought, as Rich mentioned, that we might meet with some developers just to gain a better understanding about the dynamics of this whole kind of process. It's certainly a project that is interesting based on Rich's presentation, but it's certainly nothing that the village has yet made any kind of commitment to move forward with. And we are all, I think, in a cautious position regarding the county affordable housing settlement, due in large part to the fact that it isn't clear what the implications might be for our community or any other, if indeed there are any. So we'll be hitting our way into these waters and trying to find out with greater clarity how we might either benefit or protect our interests going forward. So with that, it's time to move through these resolutions and go home, huh?
I'll see.
The treasurer asked if we pulled the budget amendment resolution.
Pull the budget amendment resolution number 196?
Yes.
Okay.
He's trying to screw up my whole-
See, the night's getting simpler already.
Well, no, it's not. I had, I had this all mapped out already. I gotta take 196.
All right, 194, Steve.
Result that the pre-check registered dated October 19th, 2009, covering check numbers 64681 to 64758, has been reviewed and hereby approved, as listed below. General Fund $162,968.54. Water Fund $99,473.57. Capital Fund $41,462.83. Refuge Fund $17,567.10. Pool Fund $2,227.19. For a total of $323,699.23.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, am I correct in assuming that this NYS MTA tax is the new tax that has been levied on employers in the Metropolitan Transit Authority District?
That's exactly what it is.
So we are paying $11,923 for-
Every six months? That's a percent of our payroll. As our payroll escalates, so will that payment to MTA. It's progressive.
So that's a half-year payment?
It's six months, yes.
Right, so round figures, that new tax, which is levied on employers, is going to cost the village of Pleasantville about $24,000 a year, so.
School districts are exempt, if there's any good news in the message from Albany.
And this is how new?
They, they enacted this back in March. They subjected all public sector employers to paying a percent of their payroll to the MTA to make up their budget.
Private sector employers as well.
Deficit in private sector.
Right.
Words fail.
That could be, they could get reimbursed.
Unbelievable.
Thank you, Shane.
All right. All in favor for the check register?
Aye.
Motion approved.
We need to send Cunningham to Albany.
You need to do what?
Send you to Albany.
On the MTA.
On everything.
Trustee Jonathan, 195.
Where is your season? Review of the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, October 5th, 2009, and they are hereby approved.
Any questions, comments, or corrections? All in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Number 196, we are pulling to, for their treasurer's request. Number 197, Brian.
Result that the Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville, hereby accepts the following donations for senior citizen programs and services. Jane Hugan, $50. Florence DeSimone, $50. And the Senior Citizen Club of Pleasantville, $25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you to all three of these people. And as you may have noticed, if you watch regularly, the senior program continues to generate a steady stream of generous contributions, and we appreciate it. All in favor?
Thank you.
That's still coming around again, doesn't it?
198, Mr. Lopez.
The Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville, hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with New York State Department of Transportation with respect to the 2011-2012 Municipal Snow and Ice Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is the annual agreement that compensates us for plowing. Am I correct, Patty?
That's right. State highways within the Village of Pleasantville, so 141 and 117.
So the agreement is that we get $1,613 per lane mile. We plow a total of 10.4 lane miles, and therefore, we receive annually $16,775.20 to plow those streets on behalf of the state?
Is that a good deal?
Probably not. I mean, it's, it's going so far out on an index lump sum. I mean, salt is, the price of salt is killing us, but the state, since the state, you know, is, it's a good deal, knowing the state will pay something. So let's put it that way.
They really, I don't know why we know that. They're obliged to pay.
Yeah, I know. It's a good deal knowing that they, they will raise the money to pay us.
That wants the state to pay. It is what it is.
Yeah. It is what it is.
If, if, just, just for interest, there is a slight reduction in the per-lane-mile price that they offered us due to lower fuel costs. So the state is very good at identifying when we deserve less money.
Yeah, that's interesting. But this is whether it snows or not, so there you go, Brian.
All right. It's not going to snow, we're going to make, make out like, all in favor?
It could be.
Aye, motion approved. Jonathan, oh, this is what you're trying to avoid.
I thought he successfully navigated the water zero. Our result is Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville, hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of the cercheori petition by BEJ LLC, Section 106.6, Block 5, Lot 23, as follows. 2005, year 2005, the original assessment of 165.5, revised 115,550. $2,665,550, revised to 115,550. 2007, $165,550, revised to 115,550. 2008, hard to believe, $165,550,000, revised to 115,550. And finally, 2009, $165,550, reduced to 105,000, they tried to trick us, $550. And further, resolve that the village of trustees hereby authorized to issue a refund in the amount of $116,948.47 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executing order from the court.
Is there a second?
Come on, guys, somebody.
Somebody second. Somebody second.
Second, where, where, second, where's 14 Bifford Road?
It is the Beecher Funeral Home property.
It's actually two consolidated actions. A small house there, too, but it's involved two properties.
Patty, I think we may have a typo here. Correct me if I'm wrong, page two, I think the 2008 revised assessment is 105, 550, not 115. Per page two of the-
Of Mary's calculations, who said?
No, 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 page, page two of the, of the consent order and judgment.
Origin, number nine. Yes, it is. I see it on Mary's calculation, too. So it goes to 105 in the last two years.
So that the revised assessment's 115,550 for '05, '06, '07, but 105, 550 for '08 and '09. Right?
Yeah, and the tax refund is correct. That number stays the same.
Okay, yeah, I think it was just a tax. So that has been amended.
And the mover makes the amendment.
And just, again, for those who may still be with us, what happens with these tax challenge cases is that when a property owner challenges their taxes in a given year, it sometimes takes, particularly with commercial properties, several years to resolve them. The village is responsible for a refund, if that is the settlement in the end, dating back to the time of the original challenge. So in this case, the challenge was initiated in the 2005 tax year, and therefore, we are providing back payments to reflect the settlement that was arrived at. And it's worth noting also, I think it's fair to say, Patty, that we have recently changed some resources and are working towards clearing out some of these older cercheori cases more aggressively, recognizing that a number of cases will cost us money, but by the same token, the longer they go out, the greater that risk becomes.
That's there to say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Brian, two, number 200.
Result of Board of Trustees, hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the maintenance agreement with Indra, 800 Brickell Avenue, Miami, Florida, for GIS support services as per the terms set forth in their agreement dated September 29th, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe what they do for us?
Sure. Indra is, was formerly Assuria. They were the company that we originally engaged to do all of our GIS data mapping. They've been, they've been merged into this other corporation that has an office up in Cold Spring right now. But we have been under contract for three years with Assuria to provide annual maintenance on our GIS data as well as the software programs that we use from, for viewing our GIS internal data. We've, we've got GIS installed in three different departments right now, and we've, we've mapped just about all of our public utilities. We are working on our stormwater mapping requirements under the new MS4 federal programs. We are also going into data collection for other downtown peripherals like street signs and parking meters, street receptacles, and anything that we can capture, so we can have maps to make levels of service decisions on some of the things that we've got out in the field. So it's primarily budgeted in the water fund because there's a considerable amount of water-related infrastructure that's captured, but all the funds that have money set aside for the annual maintenance for GIS.
Is this just public facilities, as in streets, sidewalks, and utilities, or does it also include updating the, the base maps for new subdivisions and site plans and so forth?
All of that. Yeah.
All of that?
All of the, we get that information from the town of Mount Pleasant, since they-
When it's filed.
Have digitized tax maps, and that gets imported to Indra by arrangement I have with, I can't think of the name of the company that Mount Pleasant uses, but it's data mapping GIS, digitized tax package they have. So anytime there are filed subdivision plots, the town is the first to make digitized maps. We get the copies for $50 a month, which is really nice. They update all my parcels.
And based on the new software we're buying for the assessor's office, does that ultimately allow us to connect to the GIS base for the tax maps?
Yes. It's a, it's a third party that handles that for the town, and we just take along $50 a month to the deal.
So the annual cost, the annual maintenance agreement is $5,250 a year. I, I, two questions about the contract, and maybe they don't really matter. One is, it gives the company the right to subcontract all or part of the maintenance to a third party at their choice, which, you know, historically hasn't been a problem. I don't know why they would do it. It's a clause that one would normally strike from a contract of this kind. Certainly would require our approval of saying.
Well, I'll make a note for, you know, how it's been sent.
And then the other one, which I think maybe is mitigated by the language that follows, is that it is one of those agreements that automatically renews.
Right, no, we're not doing that.
I'm really feeling rather dark about contracts that automatically renew.
Yeah, I've already discussed that.
Although, it is subject to termination by either party by three months prior notice at any time, so that has some, has some advantages. But if we can get rid of the automatic, I, I think they just need to come back to us every time.
That's just fine. Thank you.
With those modifications, it's fine by me. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Two, number 201, who's that? Who was the last one?
Was I?
Is there 201?
Yes, I was the last one. Yes, it's the PBA.
PBA collective signing. You were the last?
Uh huh.
There you go.
Whereas negotiations have been ongoing between the bargaining team for the Village of Pleasantville, the village, and the bargaining team for the Police Benevolent Association of Pleasantville, the PBA, for successor to the June 1st, 2006 to May 31st, 2008 agreement between the parties. And whereas those negotiations have resulted, an tentative agreement contained in a memorandum of agreement dated October 13th, 2009, which has been ratified by the membership of the PBA. And whereas the village board of the Village of Pleasantville has reviewed the terms of the memorandum of agreement and finds the settlement consistent with the terms contained therein is in the best interest of the village, therefore, be it resolved that the village board hereby approves and ratifies the terms of the aforementioned memorandum of agreement, and hereby authorizes the mayor and the village administrator to execute a collective bargaining agreement consistent with the terms thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, can I just add that it's still subject to the vote of the PBA? It's been approved by their executive board as, in, in terms of, you know, the scope and the content of it, but it's still subject to-
So, under those circumstances, that the executive board has, has accepted it, but the full membership of the PBA has yet to vote on it, then that will happen later this week. Is it appropriate to divulge the terms of the agreement?
Um, sure.
Hmm?
Um, I-
Well, recognizing the fact that in, in what we believe to be the unlikely but still possible-
Good question. I didn't ask to run that with-
The still possible event that the PBA might not vote to accept it, we would be returned to the negotiating table.
Soon.
I'm somewhat-
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question.
You know, do we need to disclose the details right now, or?
No.
I mean, do we need to vote on it right now?
Yes, there needs to be some acknowledgement that the board supports the memorandum of agreement. I mean, maybe, maybe that's simple.
Here would be, here would be, here would be my suggestion. I think we should not divulge the terms of the agreement pending ratification by the full PBA.
Then we gotta have a resolution.
We could have a resolution that, that we have accepted this.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then, at the point at which the PBA has ratified it, we certainly will have, at our next meeting, an opportunity to describe to the public the nature of the agreement and the steps by which we arrived at it.
That's fine.
But certainly from the standpoint of the community, it's worth knowing that the current police contract expired about a year and a half ago. The police are working without a contract, and so the contract that is proposed here is already used up to a certain extent because it's referring to the 18 months that have already passed. So we've been in extended negotiation with the PBA and took a step that has not been taken in the village for a good long while of declaring an impasse and going to mediation, wherein a mediator is hired from the state list and came here last week and negotiated with the PBA and its attorney representing the police side, and Patty Dwyer, and our labor attorney in this matter, McKenan Bean, representing the village side. So at the point at which this is ratified by the PBA and therefore finalized, we'll describe the terms and I think have more to say about what we view as the implications of it, not only for the present, but going forward.
I would just point out, before I vote to accept this, because I think it reflects a lot of work, both on Patty's part and our negotiator, and, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, we're not going to divulge the terms of the agreement, but I would just like to point out that the Consumer Price Index last year went down by two percentage points. It's minus two, and I think it's pretty safe to say that the police contract is not going down by 2%. So all of us who are living in our lives, paying a lot of money, and in some cases, having a difficult time to make it, you know, and our, we're seeing our incomes going down by at least 2%, you know, this, our, our taxes go up, will be going up because of, and, and they deserve it, I'm sure, and they're in the middle of the pack, and, and the police is not just our guys. But at some point, you know, we need to reexamine on a statewide level how long we can do this, how long we can maintain these increases when the CPI is going down.
Okay. I mean, I certainly think at the point at which we describe the terms of this in general, and are in, at the same time, in a position to put in context some aspects that are soon to be made. I think it's fair to say that there'll be plenty of opportunity for that, but also that I think the board as a group understands the options available to us, and I think the PBA is too.
Right. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make the difference between voting yes on this and voting yes on sort of the, the larger issue of, of, you know, of tax, of taxes.
Okay, understood. So.
I do, I just have one question. I mean, there's plenty of times where we have to, why, why are we doing it this way? I don't remember doing this, doing it this way before, Patty, where-
Well, typically you're authorized.
Where we're, we're voting on something prior to it actually being a done deal.
Well, it, you have to, you have to, maybe it's because we're in mediation, but the board has to authorize me to sign this contract based on memorandum of understanding on the condition that the PBA ratified as well, because they need to know that. I have no authority unless it's, you know, delegated in this matter, so there needs to be some-
We give her the authority to-
Needs to be some reaction from the board to the proposal, you know, and unless there is, the PBA, you know, also.
Well, and we're in a circumstance where, based on our own analysis of it and on, and on advice of counsel, we believe we are at a point where we have before us an agreement that we can ratify. So I don't see any reason not to make that point in the form of a resolution. In the, what we believe to be unlikely event that the PBA might project it, we'd be back to negotiating.
Right. They, they need to make a good paid effort to sell-
And what they then know is that we had on the table a set of terms that were acceptable to us. So, again, I, I- to us, so, again, I view that as unlikely, and I think there's been a good faith effort on both sides to arrive at a resolution of this, and we all believe that we have arrived at that point, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion approved. That is our last item on a long night, I thank you for your patience.
No, no, I'm sorry, there's one more.
Oh, no, no, yes, we have one more, we have one more resolution.
One more resolution, just read it into the record. This is resolution number 2009-202, authorizing the village attorney to proceed with INREM foreclosure proceedings. Resolved, the village's Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village attorney and village treasurer to perfect the INREM foreclosure proceedings that were duly noticed in accordance with the applicable state laws.
Anyone want to adopt that resolution in the form of a mover?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
The village is in the process of moving as it has to towards foreclosure process for certain properties that are substantially delinquent in their tax payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Work session items.
I just think it's important, just as a, on the foreclosure, we are dictated by state law as to how to do this, this is one of these situations which is never pleasant, but we are, there's a procedure that by law we're required to follow, so...
That, I think, was our last act of the evening.
Yes, one discussion with the chief and executive session.
One discussion with the chief, a couple of minor items to settle in work session, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for your patience, thank you to the school board for the visit, we have a work session again next week, our next regular meeting, Monday, November 9. Good night.
Good.